This episode of Southeast Iowa Today is brought to you by Griner Auto Body of Washington, Iowa. Using state-of-the-art techniques and decades of experience to get your car back on the road after an accident. Car Doctor of Washington, Iowa. No matter who Frankenstein'd it, they can fix it, clean it, and customize it. McDonald Bodyard of Kyoto, Iowa. For all your farm equipment and auto recycling needs. For great food, it's your choice. Your Choice Family Restaurant of Wayland, Iowa. Open Tuesday through Sunday. Try the John Bane Sandwich on your next visit. Gerling Repair of Winfield, Iowa. If your mower is Ted, call Fred, your Husqvarna, Aaron's, and Gravely dealer. Fred also fixes and sells snow blowers. B&amp;B Propane and the family of Jet Stops. CW Tree Trimming LLC. We're into your trees, not your wallet. Serving all of Henry County and the surrounding area, and we offer a senior citizen and veteran discount. Iowa Technology Systems of Mount Pleasant, Iowa. Managed IT, including software and hardware navigation needs. No job is too small. Iowatechsys.com. If you are someone having trouble with your PC or laptop, or a demanding business, you can be our next happy customer in Mount Pleasant. Dutch Market and Coffee Talk of Washington, Iowa. Dutch Market can handle all of your grocery needs. They even have a conference room that you can use for free. Coffee Talk's drive-thru is open and ready to serve you coffee, energy drinks, sandwiches, baked goods, and ice cream. They all present the award-winning Southeast Iowa Today. Here's the author of Christie's Journey, The Beat Goes On, and your host, John Bane.
Thank you, announcer Cody Roy of NewEnglandDukes.com for your golden pipes and wonderful introduction. Today is October 23rd, 2025, and I'm at the Henry County Courthouse in Mount Pleasant, Iowa, where the Henry County Board of Supervisors held their weekly meeting. On today's agenda: Approval of Agenda, Approval of Minutes, Approval of Claims, County Engineer Jake Hotchkiss Weekly Updates, Fremont Avenue Culvert Replacement Bid Opening, Treasurer DVH Credit Refund Error Letter, Public Hearing, and First Reading of Traffic Code Enforcement Ordinance. Motion to Create Information Technology (IT) as a Stand-Alone County Department, answerable to the Board of Supervisors. Supervisor Subcommittee's. And hey, stick around until the end of this episode of Podcast Excellence, because public comment is mined into podcast gold. Also loyal viewers and listeners, I want you to know, and I'm sure you already did, I'm a man of my word. After today's meeting, I asked Henry County Auditor Robin Dietrich if she would have time to go on camera so I could ask her about the facts. She told me not at this time. So, you are up to speed, and here's the meeting.
Okay, it's now nine o'clock. Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda on this October 23rd, 2025, with the Henry County Board of Supervisors is to approve the agenda. Motion to approve or can we change?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with one change. Item number five. We'd like to continue that to probably two weeks out, so we get more feedback on the traffic ordinance.
Okay. With that, if there's a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. We have the October 16th, 2025 minutes presented to us. We'll have a chance to look at them. Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve, if there's a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. Motion passes. We have our county engineer weekly update. Okay. We're in charge, sir.
All right, well, the first item is we have one bid for a box culvert. So, we did a local letting on this. We did advertise this through DOT as well, or through the Service Bureau. And with that, we have two contractors requested plans, and we received one bid. So, the first one I'm opening, and only one I'm opening, is from Iowa Bridge and Culvert.
Is that who's doing the bridge on 218?
Correct, yeah.
That's what I thought.
They are, they probably do a lot of our local work in this area in general, so.
Well, it looks like they're wrapping up 218, so. That's good news.
It's, uh, yeah, the approaches look like they were being poured yesterday, their final lane, and they got railing to do again.
Very, and I'm sure.
We've got a bid running, and the bid on is signed.
It seems like that project went fast.
But if you lived there, you wouldn't think so.
I thought it might get a reaction.
I thought it might get a reaction.
I put an extra 5,000 miles in my squad truck because of that detour.
You and me both.
Yeah. All right, so we have a bid here of $168,946. We will want to check the math. I'll take that later, but that is the bid amount, and.
Is that close to where you would guesstimate it?
It makes me pretty happy. So, I was higher than that. We've got that here somewhere.
And that's going to be a box concrete culvert?
Yep, box culvert on Fremont. This is south of the Conservation Center, and my estimate was 195,000. So, we've got a great price. What I would tell you on that price, and the way we come up with our estimate is we're looking at DOT average prices across the state, and then we compare that to what we've received in the past on projects. So, the most recent one we would have had was Franklin Avenue. We would have sold a higher cost because they're mostly extensions. This is a replacement. The other side of this gives them a very open window to do construction. They could do it this winter if they wanted to, and it has a late start date of next summer on that. So, there is some flexibility for them to get that work done.
How wide is that going to be?
Uh, the road top itself will be 20, the gravel road section itself will be graded out as a subgrade at 28 feet, and then we have the slopes that are on the culvert itself. So, there is no width restrictions when we go with the culvert on there.
Correct, yeah. Because I know today the bridge is a little restrictive.
Yeah, yep, yep, yep. Most of the time, that's the more positive side of getting, going from a bridge to a culvert, is that you have really no width restrictions.
Get rid of the rail.
Correct, yeah. So, yeah.
Okay.
That looks good. We'll review the numbers, make sure everything looks good on math, and then I would most likely bring a recommendation to you guys next week on that.
Great, thank you.
Yeah. It's always good if it's under my estimate. This feels better.
Yeah, we got 3,000 roughly.
Yeah. Okay. So, that is done. Next up, I have a couple permits here. These are tile outlet permits, so Jared has taken a look at these, so I don't have a lot of information on them, but.
This is field tile coming into the ditch?
Yes, correct. They're doing some work. Both of them are, they're tiling and outletting their tile into our ditch, and then Jared looks at that from the perspective to make sure they match up. Usually you have a requirement that they have to be one foot above the bottom of our ditch, and then we're not required, we're not responsible necessarily for those in the future ditching stuff, that that's not our job to maintain that outlet. We do maintain our ditches, but over time, we run into it. So, it's no different than a septic tile or anything else like that, that there is some, the owner does have some responsibility. Then, just as you're signing that stuff, maintenance updates. Territory operators, we have been doing some minor blading. We have put them out to work on intersections, trying to take care of it. I will tell you, ground rubber conditions are pretty rough right now, just because the ground is really hard, and trying to get in into that material to try to take some of those out, and obviously, the more that we blade and chew that up, the more dust that we're getting. So, we are working on that, but not at the scale that we would like to at this point. So, we do need some moisture. You may hear some things. We've had more calls up in the Winfield area, and rightfully so, with the detour of the 78, there's a lot of side traffic that's using, utilizing gravel roads, and it's just really hard to do that work right now to get those repaired. So, we're aware of it. We did work on some intersections up there, but we need, we need to get the traffic off the road before we can do some, get it ready for winter.
So, speaking of that, some time ago, we had some trouble, was it Penn Avenue up there, a dirt road?
Uh, yes.
Out by Winfield?
Yeah, correct.
Because of 78, is that all resolved?
Uh, it's still closed. We have had, you know, trouble with fences and stuff, and our blade operator, we just, we're talking about the day, we're going to do some blading out there to try to get ready. It is not unpassable at this point. It's pretty dry. Again, we're trying to prohibit, prohibit the truck traffic from going down that road because it's a posted bridge.
It's a posted bridge, and we prevent truck traffic. So, what are the courses of action? Does the sheriff get involved, and does he get tickets, or what's the?
Yeah, so we did, uh, I can't speak on everything on that, but we did have a semi get stuck that crossed the bridge.
Right.
And we, we involved DMV on that as well. I think the sheriff's office was helping us out in that process. So, I can't tell you what fine, but they, they were overweight, so I believe they would have gotten a fight on that.
Yeah, plus they tore the road up, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody should pay for that.
Yeah. So, and that is, that's something that the sheriff kind of takes care of, depending on what, what they see out there. I think on this one, it's probably going to be more focused on the bridge, the overweight load over the bridge would be the bigger concern from our perspective, but yeah.
Diverting from the, diverting from the road signage, we would contend with that, but the weight violation, we'd probably call in a trooper that specializes in CMVs.
An old Chad type thing?
Yeah. Well, they have the, they have the equipment, scales, that kind of stuff. So, we'd call them that, throw up a weight issue, but if it was just simply somebody driving around the barricade, we contend with that with just a simple traffic ticket.
Okay, that's good.
You know, any law enforcement has the ability to have a vehicle suspected of being overweight to the closest near scale facility.
Correct, yeah.
You might have to pay a scale ticket, but.
Right. Take them to a co-op or something if you need to, yeah.
Okay. Good to know, thank you.
They work great with us if we have a concern and call them. They always respond well. You know, obviously, I think the kicker to that is, if there was another emergency, they're not going to sit around, and nor would we expect them to sit around.
But that makes sense, yeah.
Yep. Um, so just continuing on here, repairing ditches and riprap. We've been doing some work on Franklin Avenue. When we've done the brush cutting, where we've been at, we've come across some areas that we were wanting to do some repairs to the ditches, some washouts that are out there, and some of that's just to get ready for the next resurfacing of that north section. So, we've been working there, north of Oak Mills, doing the riprap, and getting some dirt in those washout ditches, and giving that, so it will not erode again to where we were at. So, we've been working out there. We've got a few other spots to do.
Excuse me, so that looks really good where you guys have done, is that skid steer was fine after the overturn?
Yep, yep, everything's okay with the skid loader, yep. So, we've got it running again, and we're going to be working, hopefully be pushing to go north here next week is the plan. So, we're going to finish where we're at, and then we're going to try to get up on the S-curves up there, or just continue working up Franklin Avenue north of 34 is the idea next. And then, we'll see, we may, if it's going well, we might keep it a little longer, just to see how the time goes with our weather. It does, it's been, it does a nice job of chewing it up, and then it does open it up for us to see some things, and then we have some other clearing that we'll be doing on Franklin Avenue with the excavator and cutting some trees down where we maybe can't remove the stumps because of the utilities underneath there, but just trying to get that right-of-way opened up so we can have better visibility.
And more importantly, the operators might as well, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a work on issue, so we're.
Yeah, good.
Um, so from the perspective of seeding, we still are working with some hydro seeding, throwing some seed out there with the anticipation that someday it will rain again, so we get some moisture out there. Uh, I say that, and then I'm going to probably wish it stopped raining, so I better be careful, but yes. Mowing, uh, we're working on paved roads again in those ditch bottoms. We kind of backed off a little bit this week, but that, because they're in their blades, working on that, but we'll again get them back in that mower again to kind of, again, work in the whole right-of-way, just trying to keep some of that brush at bay that we have done in the past, so like J-20, Geo'd, the southern part is where that mower has been working. Rented, we talked about the skid loader already, so I'll skip over that one. The other thing that we've been working on this week, in the last two weeks, is we've been working on yearly assessments. So, we're visiting with all of our employees in our department, kind of going over our annual assessment and review to kind of follow along with our scale and page, page, page scale to be ready for budgeting time. So, that's been going well. We get some good feedback. We're able to give good, good feedback to the employee as well as get, receive and feedback from our guys as well, is what we can do differently. And then, the last item I have is my positive for the week, and I wanted to pass just to visit a little bit about things that are going on in Iowa and things that actually affect Henry County. So, I do have some extra copies if you guys want to look at this. Just something that the Iowa County Engineer Service Bureau, as our association has put out, and I'm going to read my first blurb, and then I can talk about some of this other stuff. So, ICA, ICEA Building Iowa Together. Since 2018, Iowa County Engineers Association has been actively working to bring alternative funding into Iowa for rural roads and bridges. ICEA formed a grants committee to review and guide our organization to secure federal grants for rural Iowa. After receiving the 2018 CHBP grant for 33.4 million, it was recognized by ICEA to maintain a competitive edge we needed to hire a grants coordinator. Lindsey Schroeder was hired in 2021 to be the lead along with the grant committee to focus our efforts on securing funds for Iowa counties. Since 2018, ICEA, in coordination with the counties, have secured funding to replace 188 bridges. And I think that's pretty big. This came out, and it just, sometimes we kind of take for granted as we're working on these projects. I have been involved with the grants committee early on, and it was a lot of time that we took for that first time around to figure out how we were going to apply, selecting the bridges across the state of Iowa. We had to remove ourselves from like our own personal counties, we're looking at the whole. And one of the nice things with bridges and the way our bridge funding works, is as bridges get replaced, big bridges, costly bridges get replaced, the formula that we utilize changes for each county. So, if a neighboring county replaces a large bridge, or like when we replace the bridge out here on 235th Street through this grant site, it will reduce our HPP funding that we will give, because it's, we have less structurally deficient bridges in our county, but it's looking at the whole rural counties together. So, this collaboration of all the counties together, we have brought in a substantial amount of money that we've had to go after, and there's been costs on our end to go. You guys have approved a couple different times to hire that consultant in these joint applications that we do, that we have to put some money out there ahead of time. So far, it's paid for itself easily for us, as we received one bridge for sure, and then we have two projects. One is a county bridge, and one is a city bridge that is in this current one, that we do expect to hear pretty soon that hopefully is successful, and we feel pretty confident that we will be successful. So, this is stuff that goes on top of our normal duties as far as what engineers are trying to do, but again, seeking those dollars to come in, and I think anytime that we bring federal dollars into the state of Iowa, that's a bonus. Typically, we're, you know, I would say it's more of a donor state when you're looking at populations and dollars coming in. So, we've been able to take advantage of this, and this is stuff that we're going to continue doing as just the process is. So, the way the government's set up right now, we do have to apply for grants for these extra discretionary grants to do it. We're taking advantage of it from the standpoint now from the county side of it, is to look at bridges, and I think this year has really kind of proved that that position has paid for itself easily. What's nice for us is that we have one person that coordinates, you know, hey, I've read about this grant, this one looks like it's going to fit well. So, on the grants committee, when we go in and start selecting which bridges with some formulas that we're utilizing, we can make the best effort to secure dollars, and we like to say for Iowa, but in Henry County's case, we've been very successful in that process. So, this was just to give you guys a little highlight or something that's a positive that's going on throughout the state of Iowa, and also effectively affects us as well. And then, it's a publication that's been put out last week, I think is when they put this out, so I wanted to share that to you guys.
Good overview. Can you just tell us what some of those, we know what the DOT is, obviously, but.
So, uh, so FHWA is Federal Highway Administration. APWA is Public Works, so that'd be like your cities association. I don't know what all the acronyms of APWA is off the top of my head. And then, ICA is Iowa County Engineers Association.
Okay.
So, some of these grants, when we do it, what they're looking at is for collaboration between state agencies, counties, and cities. One of the reasons that I think Iowa's been very, uh, successful in the grant application is Iowa is one of the few states that has standard bridge plans. So, a lot of the bridges that we put out there are standard bridge plans, so it's, it's very similar if you go any part of the state of Iowa to build, if there is a 140-foot slab bridge that's 30 feet wide, that's a standard that every contractor can go to the DOT website, grab that standard, they know how to build the bridge. It's not a unique design. When you start talking about some of your bigger bridges, like over the Skump River and different things like that, you've got, then maybe not utilizing standards as much because it's a little bit more unique. But when we did the bridge on Nebraska Avenue, that's a standard bridge, it's an easy thing to pop that in. When a bridge contractor bids, they already know kind of the, the standards of how to build that. And so, I think we've taken a hold of that here recently, since 2018, to really hone in on that selection side of like, we're very, in our opinion, and maybe it's not the best way to say, but we feel like we're pretty efficient on getting bridges out the door for, for letting and different things like that.
How does that work with the Southeast Iowa Regional Planning?
Yeah, so Southeast Iowa Regional Planning, so that's where, when we're using federal dollars for bridges, they're involved in the process as far as our DOT budget goes. That's our RPA, so region, so they are the ones that are communicating and documenting how we're using our federal dollars from the region standpoint. But as far as how we do our design and different things like that, they're not greatly involved with that. Where we get them involved is if we're doing like a RISE grant, or there are other grants that they help, I think they do a lot of.
Applications and facilitate that.
So, maybe like a sewer, septic system in the community and stuff, I think they get involved with that more. I, I would tell you, the County Engineers Association, we've kind of taken on the bridge side of it to say it's more of a holistic thing versus a region area that we're looking at. I think we've been pretty successful, because again, we're analyzing it from the whole system and trying to pick the best projects. And we, and when it first got started, you're going after these really high-dollar bridges, and now we're getting into some of these are more mid-range bridges where it's more about the number of bridges and affecting more roads, I guess.
And that makes sense, and, and the RISE project that we're talking about here specifically would be by Continental, right?
Correct. There are some, we're working on some things there with the city, and I, you know, at some point, I'll have to bring that up to you guys for your support, because you ultimately have to decide if you want to move forward with that or not. We're working on estimates, and it's been a little slow right now, but we are in the process, and then that's one aspect of that funding. There's some other areas that we're also going to go out and try to get, and, and that's kind of a change over the last maybe 10 years, is that we really try to bring in those safety dollars. I think we've taken a good advantage of different safety improvements with paved shoulders, with rumble strips. Those are dollars that we're grabbing from somewhere else to bring in, to help make our project successful. So, it's always kind of a background, kind of a balance, because there is extra cost to these projects, but usually the safety improvements or whatever else we're bringing in outweighs some of the other issues that we may have with it, or the negatives that we might see.
Excellent, thank you.
Yeah, that's all I have. Got any questions for me?
So, you can bring this back next week, then?
The, yeah, we'll probably have to trace, we'll get the GID item on that. If everything looks good, we'll be bringing that up to move forward with that contract.
What was this?
That was for the Iowa Bridge, so that was a bid letting, so if you wanted to fill out the sheet, you want.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is to create, I'm looking to create a information technology, a stand-alone county department, answerable to the Board of Supervisors. Do you have a motion for this?
Yes.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that. Discussion?
Time for discussion.
Chad, you, you had something?
I, I just kind of put together a motion. I have better luck writing something out rather than trying to word it, so I make a motion to the Board of Supervisors to facilitate the restructuring of the Henry County Information Technology or the IT entity, including staffing, budget oversight, and administrative duties from the Henry County Auditor's Office to the Henry County Board of Supervisors. This action will cause the IT department to be a separate departmental entity in Henry County Iowa Government, and solely answerable to the Henry County Board of Supervisors. This motion is being made with the knowledge, consent, and agreement of the Henry County Auditor, Robin Dietrich, so.
Stevie, how are you?
Uh, I think that pretty well covers it for me. Are you good, Mark?
I'm good. With that, all goes in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, passes. Uh, Subcommittee?
I, it's not really a Subcommittee, but we were invited to take part, all Supervisors were invited to take part in a pipeline safety training, presentation put on by a pipeline corporation that, that is amounting to entities from all the different pipelines around the area, come together and they, they give out a, an information packet of what, what pipelines are in the communities, the counties, it's divided out into, gives all the emergency contact information for that particular pipeline, give everybody a kind of a high-level altitude look at, what to look at in the event of an emergency, if, you know, if somebody would run off the road and hit a, a valve that you see might, you know, just steer clear, you know, basically, but how to, how to decipher the, the needed information for that to, to report to the emergency facilities. Rich, I'm going to give you a, there's a kind of a template that, for dispatching, it kind of has some of the, the general information that the pipelines would like to be able to know when they get the, the call from a dispatcher. It's probably old information, but this is a 25 printing, so it, it might have some updated type things on it. The information packet with all the, the pipeline information, contact information, and, and technicians and things like that, I'm going to give to Walt Jackson, the Emergency Management Coordinator, for his information. It, it was a couple-hour class. I, I thought it was worth the drive to Fort Madison last night to, to sit in on it, just to, to kind of get that high-level view. There was one other county supervisor, and most of the other people were fire department, emergency management coordinator, that type of thing, so. All else, it was just a couple hours of, of decent training. I mean, it was interesting, you know, where they talk about the, the level of pressure that is being pumped through these pipelines. It is amazing. I mean, we're not talking, you know, five or 15 pounds of pressure. I mean, we're talking upwards of a thousand pounds of pressure in some of these lines, and you talk about if they're moving natural gas or anhydrous ammonia, and, and that, what the potential there is. So, it was, and they gave me a little certificate of completion there and whatnot, so it was worth two hours.
Good. Anything else? Steve?
I didn't have any Subcommittee's, but I have had several things going on this week, so I'll give you guys an update on where we're there. On October 25th, next Thursday, we have about three things going on for sure. The revolving loan trust fund that's managed through Southeast Iowa Regional, it's going to be here to give us an update on where we're at with the revolving loan trust fund. We've got about $200,000 on that account, and we've not had a loan in Henry County on that trust fund since 2013, so looking for some good information to provide us some answers on why we're not utilizing that fund as best we possibly could. So, Zach James will be here to talk to us about that and give us a little more insight and information, and some things that we really can do within the county to help support the effort and what that fund is really all about, so. Another thing that we have going on next Thursday will be Gina Parsons from Danville Mutual Telecom is going to come and give us an update on what they're doing for telecom in the western, the eastern part of our county, west of Danville. I looked at the maps that they provided to us, and from what I can see, we have some marginal support there, so she's going to get a little more detail for us, but I think you guys have given them $700,000 through some ARPA funds, pretty significant amount of money, and we probably need some better answers than what we're seeing on the map that was supplied to us, because I think originally you guys said something about being coverage of west, like Geo'd, south of New London, Lowell, and those areas.
That was the, the goal was to stretch into Henry County from the Danville area, and the Lowell, Geo', our south New London communities there.
Yeah, and they provided a map for us, but right now, that map is pretty marginal from what we can see. And Jake, you have not had any requests from Danville Mutual Telecom, have you?
It's been, it's been several years ago, but right when the ARPA stuff all happened,
It's been, it's been several years ago, but right when the ARPA stuff all happened, they were in the process of already doing it. So I don't know if that overlaps, if they were asking for reimbursement or what, but there was some fiber that was installed like on Quincy, three-twelfth and three-tenth in that area.
But that was sometime.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Yeah.
I can dig up the permit, but I can't tell you.
We're talking within the last year, the dollar variety, so.
No.
Yeah, so seven-hundred thousand dollars. So maybe some better answers on that to better understand what's going on there. And then I think most of you are aware that on the twenty-ninth of October, the IT tech team will be here. They'll be here by eight o'clock in the morning. They're going to spend a couple of days with us to get a good overview of where we're at. Most of the department heads and elected officials have got the survey that those folks have asked us to finish and would provide them some information so that they have some idea of what our concerns are and what they can better do to help facilitate our needs as they do the audit. So did you get that, Jake? I missed a couple of people, my fault. I'll get it to you for sure because I missed Joe too. Rich, you got it right? Nathan? Robin, did you get it as well?
Yeah.
Okay. So everybody but you two, I apologize. Go figure. But anyway, it's a survey monkey and we'll try to get that done probably tomorrow at least, so they've got a few days to pull that data together so that we can do a better analysis of what our needs are, short-term, long-term, and what some of the concerns might be. So the sooner the better. And then again, they're going to be here the twenty-ninth and the thirtieth. So on the thirtieth at eleven o'clock, they're going to give us an overview and an update of their findings and then they'll come back to us at a later date to make some recommendations. But they will be here for a day and a half at least to do an audit and an overview and give us some feedback and some information. And then lastly, the posting for the IT position, the director was posted last Friday about noonish roughly, and I'm waiting to hear back from HR. Our HR is facilitating the process for us, so they're going to gather all of the candidates and then the ITIC team will do the final recommendations. They'll they'll put those folks through the scrubber and see who the qualifications are and how that falls together. So we'll have a a good quality of candidates to choose from and then we'll bring those folks down for an interview here and see how that works out. And I think, you know, the folks here are interested in interviewing, so we'll pull together with Paul, a small team of people to do an interview on site hopefully and make that work and get the right person in here so that we're all comfortable with who we're going to be dealing with in the in the long term. So I think that's it.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
I had Grand River Intermodal Authority meeting last week. The main thing on our agenda was just to prove the legislature, no action from our county, our engineer there. And then I had community action in Southeast Iowa. What happened was the reappointment of board members, election of new board officers, updates on the Head Start Playground in Fort Madison and the building project of Head Start at Fort Madison. And also a few budget amendments that have come to us from the FADS program and also the Community Services Block Grant. Also, I I got a phone call, I know these, Steve got a phone, he hasn't got the information, hasn't had the return phone call, I don't believe.
No.
This is from a lady, I didn't get her name, it's, I know it's on the email there. She sent us an email. Southern Pacific and Burlington Northern are trying to get a merger and one, she wouldn't know if I knew anything about it. And I said, only thing I knew about was what I heard on Channel Six TV and that was it. And so she asked me a few questions and asked me if I had any comments or wanting to know anything about our county. I said, if the merger takes place, the best thing I could know if they could help us try to get our rails for for economic development for the future. And that would be, that's all I knew about it. And I noticed that she got your number, Steve.
Yep.
You got yours too, Chad?
Yeah, I just wanted to see that to me. Find out.
And the last thing is, we got a letter here from the County Treasurer. There have been, brought to our attention that two parcels to two different homeowners paid taxes which shouldn't have on disabled veterans, homestead credit. And so she is refunding those dollars to those people at this time and we just have to sign off on it and that's it.
And you're familiar with that, too, Nick?
Yeah. They're qualified for that homestead credit since twenty-two, twenty-two. I guess my understanding is they have to go in and you have to zero those out manually in solutions, which is kind of silly, but two of them got in. So it went to tax cycle and and they paid the bank, saw that they were, taxes were due and paid it. So yeah, I would say they need to get their money back.
They'll be getting their money back.
Thank you.
Any public comments at this time? Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to read to you a part of a postcard I received last week, today, I believe. "To the Waco School District Registered Voters from the Henry County Auditor and Commissioner of Elections, date October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five, regarding the Waco Community School District Public Measure. We are writing to inform you that on November fifth, twenty-twenty-five, the city school election ballot will be a public measure for the Waco School District. Per Iowa Code thirty-nine point five, we're required to provide you with the full text of the bond measure, it'll be on the ballot. The full text can be found below and I won't read that to you." Is that correct?
I wish you knew that before and Heidi was the one who did that for us at our office. So I'll have to, we'll probably have to resend that out.
Okay.
This is the first time it's been brought to my attention. Thank you for bringing it to my attention and take care of that today.
All right, thank you. I guess you should be grateful that this is going to be on video too, for those that don't get their mail every day.
This is the first time I've gotten this. This is the first time somebody's ever sent anything. So yeah, I'll make sure we take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to address your public comments from last week. I take offense personally, as well as two other people in here doing these videos. I, to my knowledge, none of these videos have been posted with any opinion attached. If the public makes opinions, that's the public's duty. Or choice. I don't know why you're lashing out at the public for something that, I mean, a picture is worth a thousand words. I guess if this puts pressure on you, just remember what Harry S Truman said. If you can't take the heat, get out of the kitchen. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have a question. Tracy Lamb, City Editor of the Hawkeye. The IT department that you just voted on, did that come with any sort of a set budget or is that something that's going to be determined as you go through your audit?
Good, good question, yeah. We did vote on that two weeks ago to move the budget from the auditor and as a standalone department or department head, and that'll be supervised by the board of supervisors because it's roughly half a million dollars.
Hundred million, okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
You bet. Good question.
Anybody else?
Yes, I'm organizing, I felt God putting it on my heart to organize community prayer, so I'm going to hand these out to you guys if you want to go and pass it down. This Sunday, anybody else want some? This Sunday. Out here on the courthouse lawn at four P M., we're going to seek God for wisdom, guidance and favor for our cities, our towns, our county, our schools, our state and our nation. We will also pray for families, those serving in government, military, law enforcement and emergency responders. So I've put it out there, put out video and this information too on social media. So I would hope that you would all join us. So I think there's a lot of things going on, not only locally, but statewide and nationally that we can seek God for. So thank you very much.
Anybody else? Cleveland?
If I don't get this done, just remember I didn't use my time last week, okay? Okay.
You think that carries over like that?
Don't slow me down. Hey, first, I, seriously, I want to thank you guys for getting a hold of this IT thing and and fixing it. I hope to get it fixed, it's only been eighteen years, you know? But anyhow, you know, I'm still receiving feedback and comments about this. And as far as I can put together, and and I think I do have very credible sources, okay? The problem started about fifteen years ago and came to a head with that anonymous letter I brought you in February, you remember that, I'm sure? So that was about Wellington's poor performance. And I can say again, and and I'm confident about this, most, if not all, of the people that worked in this courthouse knew about it, but they were afraid to bring it forward. This issue is far from over. One person suggested to me that we need a private investigator. And I want to remind you about that September third phone call I got from Derek Wellington. And I didn't mention this before, but it really struck me that he wants to remove two supervisors, just two, not all three, just two. So anyhow, okay. The transcript from Auditor Robin Dietrich's public comment, October sixteenth, and this was found in KILJ's radio, they posted online, and this transcript is far different than her recorded public comment during the meeting. So anyhow, this this public comment is kind of interesting. She says that the auditor's office is independent, yeah, we've seen that. And down at the end, she said Henry County Government should operate as a team, that's kind of conflicting. She mentions public comment and behavior and interesting, that's two words that I found in that nasty letter that I got in mid-August. So anyhow, and like this unrecorded public comment posted on KILJ after the meeting, that's kind of like that letter of resignation that came out after the meeting. And by the way, I'm asking for a copy of that letter of resignation from Derek Wellington. I'd like to have that. Okay, so anyhow, in this transcript, she suggests that we go to her office, you know, to get the facts. But I'm going to give her a list of questions here, Ms. Dietrich, and two bucks attached to that. You can respond in writing, mail it back to me, and that's two dollars cover the cost of a paper, envelope, stamp. I'm happy to pay for that. Okay. So yeah, I'm all about transparency too, and that's what she says in this letter or this public comment. And I can tell you that in the eighteen years that Wellington was the IT guy, he was also working for other people, getting paid for full-time here, and I know people he did work for personally, he was there. So anyhow, so during this time, you know, we had this scandal with the attorney's office, the IT guy, and you guys still handing out pay increases for people here, just like parade candy, just throwing that out there. And I I I don't get that, you give us the largest tax increase in the state of Iowa and we got all this corruption going on. All right, Henry County is a small county, got it? We need to be looking for IT service, share that with other counties. It's, that's pretty simple, let's let's work for the taxpayers for a change, you know, and give us a little break, save some money. All right, now, as for the videos, videos are the facts, pretty simple. Okay, several people have told me they tune in. One person as far away as Texas, believe it or not, tunes in. I think that's kind of incredible, but anyhow, they they tell people what's going on in our county government and people that can't get in here, people don't know, and it it's informative for them, I, they've told me this. And one person said it seems like a soap opera or even a whodunit mystery. Anyhow, there's, it's just a useful way to let people know what's going on and these recordings are also evidence. Anyhow, just remember, I'm the victim in all this. I'm the victim. And I didn't ask to be part of it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hearing that? Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
For a second?
Yes, sure.
Any discussion on that? Not all goes in paper, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Hey, thanks for sticking around to the end of this podcast episode. And I told you that there was podcast gold in it and if you if you're still watching, you see that that is true. So once again, thank you for watching. Thanks to my sponsors, Griner Autobody Car Doctor, McDonald Boneyard, Your Choice Family Restaurant, Gerling Repair, B and B Propane and the family of Jet Stops, CW Tree Trimming LLC, Dutch Market Coffee Talk and Iowa Technology Systems. I got them all. I'm your host, John Bain. Hey, make sure to give this episode a like, follow and subscribe, it's free, and stay friendly, Southeast Iowa.